Good morning, I would like to call this meeting to order. I'm Kevin Arnold, the LRA chairman, on behalf of myself, fellow commissioners, the mayor of the city of St. Louis, Controller's Office, St. Louis Board of Education, Neil Richardson, Sheldon Anderson, and the employees of the LRA welcome you. It is a job of the LRA to sell unutilized developed properties to residents and developers that have the financial ability and expertise to redevelop some properties and get them back to the tax roll. In a few moments, we will have our procedures listed on the agenda for today. If we have anyone that has signed up to speak on behalf of your office, that will be, you will be given that chance to do so, but please limit your presentations to three minutes. Thank you. Any minutes?
Commissioner, minutes was presented as we reviewed them in our packets, and I'd like for us to move to the minutes of our April twenty-fourth meeting.
Second.
So we're moving second. I would give the call for the other.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes. Hearing no opposition or motion carries.
Do you have any requests from the commissioners?
No.
Neither do I. Go ahead, open. You stay.
Our first speaker that we have signed up is the item number thirty-seven. This morning, and she's here, if anyone have any questions, call.
Yes, I was actually coming in on board, they were saying it was needed some more.
Speak a little louder.
Saying more information on for persons and property.
Okay, so is this on parcel sixty-seven?
Yes.
Okay. I think that we're good, we have the information that we need at this time to make that decision.
Okay, okay, unless you have additional. Yeah, only additional add is on doing to closing, that we can kind of have, or we can get the last survey for us cut through the forestry department on, on closing.
Okay, you can email me and we'll talk about it.
Okay. Those are the questions I had on there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know what just happened.
No, because I have number thirty-seven. On the thirty-seven, being actually, I gave them the information, but he's okay with that, and if someone has any questions or anything, okay.
I don't have any question. So you're fine.
This one's projected, this one. Yeah, it's just on the projector, it's on there.
And that's Mrs. Flowers, I have number thirty-nine.
Hello. So, I guess you guys haven't came up to a decision because I guess you're still looking for like a community leader or something like that in the Panroads area, I don't think it's why, I've looked by right and I haven't found anyone, so I want to know what else, or does that support?
So you have not been able to talk to anyone?
I haven't been able to talk to anyone, but I have a petition in the neighborhood on the sign, and the paper one, but I also have my own line one that a lot of people have signed.
You want to see?
Okay, we'll take that.
Okay, thank you.
Frequently. Yes, if there's something you're asking, we could answer.
Yes, and that speaker is for item number twenty. Pete Isabel, and he's, he's not here, someone's here to her, I gave him the information, but he's finally back.
Okay, thank you.
Item number fifty-five, I have the next, um, question, and that's for me. And it's been trying to get the information that needed.
This is sixty-five, bye.
How you doing? I spoke with the, um, college chair, neighborhood community leaders, I went to their last meeting, but they told me that they were going to reschedule the meeting and make a decision upon themselves next month.
When is, when is the meeting?
June twenty-sixth, I think, June twenty-sixth.
Okay. And you attempted to go to the meeting and they did not have it?
Um, they spoke about it, but they said that they had to agree in the next meeting upon themselves, and they didn't want me to attend when they have the next year, so make that agree.
Okay.
That's people that are out of the item number sixty, out of sales, so item number sixty-four. Anyone have any questions?
Six, sixty-four, number fifty.
No questions.
The next speaker that I had signed up for this morning. Do we have anyone in the basement? Do we have anyone in that waiting room?
Yes, Ms. Barbara, Lynn. Ms. Barbara, you can unmute.
Hello, I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, I am, I am very hard of hearing and I have a vision problem, so I'm very, very clumsy with this, I apologize. Um, were you going to ask me a question, or did you want me to give my input?
Year of, yes, if you could just go ahead and present any information you like for us to have, referring to this property, we would appreciate it.
Okay, um, I am a very long time homeowner, um, sitting here one lot over from the side lot next to the alley, and so I've applied to purchase the side lot next to the alley. I'm one lot over from it because I am in the part of Old North that's right on the boundary with Hyde Park, there's about a strip of two blocks between Hebert and Branch where there's a whole lot of northside regeneration parcels that have just been sitting here since two thousand five, two thousand six. And some of you may recognize my name as being one of the people who was involved in suing the city and state over to slow Paul McKee down so we could get more of our elderly neighbors into safe places before they lost their homes. So, uh, I've never tried to buy, you know, the property because it's not contiguous, but since you changed your policies last year, I've been going door to door in our little section of heaven up here to let the neighbors know about your new policies, which we greatly appreciate. And we are all trying now, again, to kind of try again to, you know, take some of these side lots uh, under our wings. I personally, and not me personally because I'm disabled, but me and my kids have been mowing probably ten LRA lots up in this area for, you know, a good eighteen years now. And I own a four family where I live, and that lot next to the alley, we would like to officially own it so that we can use it for the tenants in the building, for parking, and just, you know, green space outside of the home. And then on top of that, the building immediately behind my house to the east collapsed, and we have terrible watershed problems, I'm sorry, I'm sure I'm hitting my three minute limit. We have terrible watershed problems and sinkhole problems, and I have to keep dealing with them. I put lots and lots of money into that lot, and I will probably, as long as I'm alive, about our water and sinkhole problems up here. So that's why I'd like to own it, I maintain it, I put lots of money into it, I'd like my tenants to be able to park right off the alley there, and I appreciate your, your time, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I forgot to say, I'm so sorry, I forgot to say, um, the sewer, my sewer goes across there, I'm done, sorry, it's the sewer that's the big deal, sorry.
Thank you for your information, we'll take that into consideration.
Next, we have Mr. Tony Stovall. Tony, you can speak now. Unmute yourself. Okay, Ms. Tony, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes, so I am here to talk about line item, I'm Tony Stovall, I'm here to speak about line item sixty-two under the deferral program, I don't know if we've gotten to that point yet or not, I'm gonna, I have to take a lunch and join the meeting. Yes, that one. So, so as, as you all see, I'm interested in purchasing this twenty-one sixteen East Adelaide building. I see you all have a lower picture of my home, twenty-one oh nine East Adelaide, and also twenty-one oh seven East Adelaide, which I've previously purchased from you all before through LRA, and I've successfully brought both of those up to, up to code, up to speed. The first one I bought, maybe I think it was five years ago, I actually grew up on Adelaide in that house that you see picture under twenty-one oh nine East Adelaide, and it's always been, I've always loved the neighborhood, the neighborhood has sentimental value to me, and my goal is just to continue to beautify the neighborhood. I maintain the lots adjacent to both of my properties, that twenty-one oh nine and twenty-one oh seven, and I noticed that this twenty-one sixteen came up for, it came up on the LRA list that I've been thinking about. Oh, I'm sorry, is somebody else speaking?
Oh, that's concerned.
No, go ahead, it's the thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, yes, I noticed twenty-one sixteen is, is up for sale from LRA, and I initially got deferred because I needed letter of support from Melinda Long, which she happily gave to me once I thought of my plans, and then also just wanted to come in and let you all know what my plans were as well. I, I, I'm thirty years old, I grew up over here from, I think until I was the age of fourteen, and then I came back and bought the twenty-one oh nine East Adelaide at twenty-five, and my goal is to just continue to beautify the neighborhood and make sure that it's beautiful like it was when I grew up, and that's pretty much my goal and my plan for that property.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stovall, really appreciate the information, we'll take that into consideration.
Next is Mr. Stephen Hinch.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, yeah, this is Stephen Hinch. What I'm looking to do is, I own EV Express, the electric charging stations for your electric cars, and that's what we're looking to do is put that in right off the center of town, and also right off the highway, too. I'm not sure how many terminals we can get in, we'll probably get about six to eight on that site. So how many parking spaces, and we'll put handicapped ones in, too. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a little new at doing this, or gonna, you know, with your company.
Excuse me, thank you. Do you have anything else that you need to add, we're investigating that and we'll let you know.
Uh, whatever we need to work with you guys.
Okay. Thank you.
Like I said, I'm a little new at doing this.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate your information.
But the electric car industry, the charging sites are the biggest thing they're having problems with, they need more and more of them. And if you ask anybody with an electric car, that's what they say, they need more electric charging sites. So what I do is I want them on the side of highways just near the off ramps.
Yes, we have your information and we are reviewing it, there are some questions that we do have, and we will be back in touch with you, okay?
What, today or another time?
So we'll, we'll get back with you, thank you, we're looking at it.
Okay.
Present time, thank you.
I don't have anymore.
Next on our, so next on our agenda, we have the offers to purchase, and we'll go through and review our decisions on the offers to purchase. Under the offers to purchase, these are parcels owned by LRA that consist of unoccupied ground or physical structures. The offers have submitted offers to purchase with intention of rehabbing properties as residential or commercial projects, an extension of their yard space, community gardens, or green spaces to enhance and beautify the community. The first category we have under offers to purchase, we're looking at the new construction, and the new construction program, these are a class A lots that have a minimum of four thousand square feet in total land with no more than three contiguous lots per parcel. The first parcel that we, the first offer that we have, offer number one, we have several multiple properties listed in exhibit A, presented by the Lakes at La Marie LLC care of Avanda Harmon. I move to defer any action on these parcels pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number two, multiple properties listed in exhibit A, offer presented by Frontier Petro LLC care of Mohammed Baraka. And I move to defer any action on these parcels pending community input prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item three, we have, again, multiple properties listed as exhibit A from Frontier Petro LLC. Reviewing, move to defer any action on these parcels pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item four, you know, multiple properties that are listed in exhibit A, offer dream builders for equity care of Michael Woods, move to defer any action on these parcels pending community driven input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category we have is under the heading as is rehab program. Under this program, these are class A residential buildings up to six units, no more than one building with no more than two contiguous lots or one commercial building. First property we have in this category, number five, is twenty-six ten Union Boulevard. The offer is Robert Fulton Development Inc., care of Tiana in Simmons. I move to defer any action on the, on this parcel pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next, number six, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer Regen Inc., care of Veronica Smith. Move to defer any action on these parcels pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, hearing no objections, motion carries. We have, next, we have thirty-nine fourteen Pinroads. We have, the offer is Andre B. Williams. Move to defer pending review of community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Next, we have item number eight. We have income housing LLC care of Moses L. Clark. We have two properties, eighty-four twenty-two Lowell Street, and we have forty-four seventy-eight Pinroads. I move to defer any action on these two parcels pending community input and support prior to the commission making this decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number nine, we have Pamber Me LLC care of Terilyn Clardy properties, forty-six thirty-two Sacramento and forty-six thirty Sacramento. Move to defer any action on these two parcels pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number ten, we have offer Kiara Bergen, property addresses, forty-one fifteen West Pinrose Street and forty-one seventeen West Pinrose. Move to defer any action on these two parcels pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision throughout second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item eleven, we have offer Rick Josh Garrett LLC care of Garrick Shepherd, property addresses forty, forty-six Cobraian and forty, forty-eight Cobraian. Move to defer any actions on these two parcels pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision throughout second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twelve, we have property address twenty-eight seventeen Kia Cut. Offer Chaz Berry, move to defer any action on parcel pending, pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number thirteen, property address nineteen sixteen Agnes. Offer dream builders for equity care of Michael Woods, move to defer the action on this parcel pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Next property that we have, item number fourteen, property address fifty fifty Emerson. Move to defer any action on this part, this parcel pending further investigation of the information that we received, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number fifteen, property address sixty-one forty-nine Sherry Avenue. Offer Loveless Legacies LLC care of Michael Joseph Loveless. Move to defer any action on this parcel pending community input and support prior, prior to the commission making a decision throughout second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Next category is under development, and we have no offers at this time, no development. Our, our next session, section is under the heading general lot purchase program. These are LRA vacant lots that can be used for any purpose other than new construction, building, rehab, or development. The first property we have in this category is fifteen eighteen Rear South Ten Street. Move to defer any action on this parcel pending further investigation of the information we receive. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number, item number seventeen, property address forty-four sixty West Bell Place. Offer Cheryl A. Brooks, move to accept offer of five hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing, and this needs to go to the appointing authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number eighteen, property address thirty-two ten North Nineteenth Street. Offer Barbara Manzera, move to accept offer of seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing throughout second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number nineteen, property address thirty-one twenty-two Chippewa. Offer Quentin L. Creighton, move to accept offer of three hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing, and this needs to go to the appointing authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty, property address thirty-eight hundred Aldine Avenue. Offer Chief Isabel, move to accept offer of eight thousand five hundred with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Um, our next property, item number twenty-one. Item number. Okay, yeah, okay, item number twenty-one, um, we have offer Jamaica. Showers Play Care Center LLC care of Jamaica the Showers. Uh, we have, uh, two property addresses, uh, forty-five twenty-one. Uh, Natural Bridge and forty-five seventeen Natural Bridge. Um, we, uh, move to accept, uh, the offer. Um, for that contingent upon approval of budget and financing. And going to the appointing authorities, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-two. We have, um, offer, uh, Joseph L. Dixon. And we have three property addresses, eleven eighteen Gayo, eleven twenty Gayo, eleven twenty-two Gayo. Move to accept offer of fifteen hundred with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Item number twenty-three. Sorry, I'm sorry. We have, uh, three prop- three properties here, uh, I move to accept. Uh, for, uh, of fifteen hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, is removed in second. Previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Uh, item number twenty-three, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Uh, the offer is Grab Boy Art, uh, Link Neighborhood. Care of Kristen Marion Petty, move to accept offer of twenty-five thousand. One hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-one cents with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-four. Property address forty-one fifty-nine Rear Newstead Avenue. Offer is Rodney Lyles. Move to accept offer of two hundred and seventy-five dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-five. We have multiple, uh, multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Uh, the offer is power for STL care of LJ. Punch, uh, MD and move to defer, uh, any action on these parcels pending. We need input and support prior to the commission making a decision, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-six, property address forty-three sixty-four Manhattan Avenue. Offer is Redline Transit Express LLC care of Shirley Moore. Move to defer any action on this parcel pending community input. And support prior to the commission making a decision, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-seven, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer is Demetrius Jones, move to defer any action on these parcels. Pending, we need support prior to the commission making any decision. Item number. I just, I'm so sorry. All right, so, uh, we're gonna do that again. We have, uh, multiple properties listed being on exhibit A, I move to defer any action on these properties. Uh, pending community input and support, do I have a second?
Second.
They're moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-eight. We have two properties, uh, five zero zero one Plaxton Avenue. And five, uh, fifty oh five Plaxton Avenue. Offer is Camp Jovan Incorporated, uh, care of Patricia Bell. Uh, move to counter this offer at two thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. For a twelve-month auction with closing contingent upon proof of funding. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading side lot program. The side lot programs, these are parcels that are owned by L R A that consist of unoccupied ground. That are too small to support new construction. These non-millable lots are parcels that are less than four thousand square feet and cannot be contiguous to another L R A person. These lots are made available and affordable to adjacent property owners to be used. As a side lot and expand personal property. The first property we have in this category, uh, property address forty-two forty-one North Nineteenth Street. Uh, offer K- Kymon L. Shelton. Move to accept offer, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number thirty, forty-four fifty-one Rear. Uh, offer Pamela R. Howard, move to accept offer, do I have a second?
Second.
To move in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item thirty-one. Property address twenty-eight forty-five Guyer Avenue. Offer Quincy L. Creighton Senior. Move to accept offer, do I have a second?
Second.
Remove the second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number thirty-two. We have, uh, multiple properties listed, okay, I'm sorry, this is under the new heading of option renewals. Option renewals are offers request for additional time to complete projects due to the construction. Due to construction delays, funding, et cetera, on options that are near expiration. Offers must display proof of consistent progress to receive renewals of options and extensions of time. The first property we have in this category, item number thirty-two. Uh, the multiple properties are listed in exhibit A, the offer is, uh, favored LLC. Care of Greta Collins. Uh, move to accept, uh, option renewal acceptance of four thousand seven hundred and one dollars. For a twelve-month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Next, we have, uh, multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Uh, offer Lewis Place P F A D C Joint Venture care of Laura Henderson. Uh, I move to accept offer of six thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. For a twenty-four month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number thirty-four, there are multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer floor delete development care of Laura Hughes. Move to accept offer of twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Uh, for a twelve-month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Next, we are moving in to. Um, our prop N S stabilized buildings. All right, so first one, uh, we have under, we have the Prop N S stabilized building. Uh, the Prop N S program is a strategic initiative with a goal of stabilizing. With the goal of sta- stabilizing vacant residential buildings owned by the City of St. Louis. Land Realization Authority, which offers them for sale. The program was established by a city-initiated and voter-approved ordinance to create a dedicated source of funding. To make it possible for L R A to improve properties within the city's land bank of vacant buildings. This investment is intended to increase the likelihood that these properties will be purchased by private parties. Who will then finish their rehab and transform current deteriorating buildings into decent housing for their communities. In this first, uh, offer, we have the property address is fifty-four forty-eight Gilmore Avenue. We have parcels A and parcel B, uh, under there. So parcel A, offer M T B Property Group LLC. And property B, uh, Ebony Moore. Uh, move to accept offer B and reject offer A. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it said A, my bad, so, sorry about that, clear, clear that up. Uh, forgetting this, um, we're moving to accept offer A and reject offer B. In favor of offer A. So do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as, uh, to move in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number thirty-six, again, we have multiple offers on, uh, thirty-six. And we have, uh, the property address is forty-five forty-nine Alcott Avenue. And, uh, first one is offer is, uh, M T B Property Group LLC. Care of Tralanda Ransom. And we are rejecting that offer due to approval of previous offer, uh, another offer. And B, uh, Ebony Moore, uh, we are rejecting that offer due to proof of financial capacity. For the project, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next property is fifty-two sixty-six Page Avenue. And again, we have multiple listings, multiple offers. Uh, presenting, we have offer A, uh, Crittina Real Estate LLC. Offer B, Emmett L. Coleman and offer C, Smith and Smith Homes LLC. Um, we move to, uh, I'd like to make a motion to accept, uh, offer B. And reject offers A and C in favor of offer B. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number thirty-eight, uh, again, we have multiple offers. We have, uh, offer, uh, A presented by Vibrant Blue Realty LLC. Uh, move to reject, uh, this offer until previous board approved properties. For closed and properties, uh, all the property projects are completed, uh, do you have a second?
Second.
They're moved in second regarding offer A for fifty-five seventy-four, uh, Page Boulevard. Uh, for that rejection, um, hearing, previous role as a vote, hearing. There are no objections, motion carries. Next, uh, in that same, um. Category, same property, we have fifty, uh, under fifty-five seventy-four page. Uh, we have an offer by Marlet Group LLC care of Marlin Brandon. And we have, um, C, another property, same property. Constantine, uh, Territorial and also another offer under that same property. Dorothy T. Griffin, uh, I move to accept offer B. Uh, which is Marlet Meet LLC and reject offers C and D. In favor of offer B for Marlet Group LLC, do I have a second?
Second.
They move the second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. We move to second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Parcel, um, item number thirty-nine, property address twenty-thirty John Avenue. Move to, uh, reject, uh, the offer. Uh, due to approval of another offer, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty, property address forty-six forty-nine Macbeth Avenue. Move to reject offer due to insufficient financial capacity to complete project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty-one, property address forty-nine seventeen Maple Avenue. Uh, again, we have multiple properties. Uh, multiple properties listed in this category, I do have a question. Item number forty-one, property address forty-nine seventeen Maple Avenue. We have multiple offers, uh, A and B, offer for number, for B has withdrawn. Uh, the offer, so we have one offer, uh, that we're considering and. I make the motion that we, uh, reject offer until other L R A projects are completed. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty-two. Again, we have multiple offers. Property, uh, address is forty-five fifty-nine Inright Avenue. Offer A, uh, Northern. LLC care of Andrew Low. And offer B, offer Shane Kennedy. Move to accept offer A, acceptance of five thousand five hundred. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-three, property address fifty-four seventy-six Beacon Avenue. Offer Ebony Moore. Move to reject offer due to insufficient proof of financial capacity. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty-four, property address forty-five twenty-one Saint Louis Avenue. Offer Lesliean Williams move to accept offer of. Item number forty-four, uh, offering in, that's forty-five twenty-one Saint Louis Avenue. Uh, offer is Lesliean Williams need to accept offer of two thousand dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Uh, I'd like to go back to item number forty-two and just clarify. Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
Alright, so, um, move to accept offer of, uh, two thousand. Now, it's with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Now, I would like to go back to, uh, item number forty-two. Uh, we reject, we accepted. Item A, uh, from Northern LLC and rejected. Uh, item B in favor of item K, just wanted to give it a clarification. Item number forty-five, we have. Alright, uh, item number forty-five, property address sixty-one seventy-six Laura. And the offer M T E property group LLC. And move to reject, uh, offering in favor of their approval of another offer. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-six, we have multiple offers here. The property address is nineteen twenty-five Blue House Avenue. Uh, offer A is Antonio D Sistrunk. And offer B Dream Builders for ethically care of Michael. Well, let's move to accept. Item A, uh, four thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. And reject B in favor of offer A. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-seven, property address thirty eighteen Taylor Avenue. Offer Javat Hughes Senior. Uh, move to reject offer due to insufficient proof of financial resources. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-eight. Property address forty-seven twenty-nine Lavigne Avenue. Offer Angel Williams move to reject offer due to. Uh, insufficient proof of financial resources. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty-nine, property address fifty-nine forty-three. Hamilton Terrace. Move to, and we have the, uh, offer Vibrant Blue Realty LLC. And that is a multiple offers there, um, Vibrant Blue Realty LLC. A and then B, we have Smith and Smith Homes LLC. And we have D, Obith, sorry, C, Obith Brand. I move to reject A due to. Uh, previous approved board properties, um, that have not been closed. Uh, that are closed and projects that are not completed. Uh, remove, move to reject, uh, item A. Uh, move to reject item B due to proof of sufficient financial resources. Uh, move to reject item C due to, um, proof of financial resources. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Okay, um, forty-nine, item number fifty, forty-nine twenty page. We have, again, multiple offers to properties. We have offer A, Vibrant Blue Realty LLC care of Ernie Gentry. And we have item D, uh, Global Care LLC. Uh, move to reject item A until previous, uh, board. Uh, reject item A. In favor of the. Current properties and or closed and properties that need to be completed, projects that need to be completed. And, um, reject item B, uh, as they're outstanding, uh, L R A. Open L R A projects. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number fifty-one, uh, again, we have multiple offers. We have, um, under, uh, the property address is thirty-nine fifty-eight Sullivan. Uh, property A, B, and C. Um, A is presented by T S Realty Investments LLC. Being by the blue reality LLC and C. Ben Brandon Properties LLC, move to accept item A. And reject items B and C, offers B and C in favor of item A. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number fifty-two, um, property address fifty-four thirty-four. Artridge Avenue, uh, presented by our Vibrant Blue Realty LLC. Uh, move to reject offer, uh, until the previous board approved properties are closed. And projects are completed. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Uh, item number fifty-three. Um, property address forty-two sixty-four Blair Avenue. Move to reject due to approval of another offer, uh, by this offer. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Now, it's been moved in second, previous roles of both hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number fifty-four, property address forty-two thirty-four, I'm sorry, forty-two thirty-six. West Cook Avenue, uh, offer Esther Jean Watson. Move to reject offer due to insufficient proof of financial resources. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty-five forty-seven thirty-two MacMillan Avenue. Uh, offer by the blue ability LLC. Uh, move to reject offer until previous board approved properties are closed and. Closed on and are completed. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number fifty-six, property address forty-seven thirty-four MacMillan. Uh, offer Vibrant Blue Realty LLC. Move to reject offer until previous board approved properties are closed on and projects are completed. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number fifty-seven, property address fifty-one twelve Wells Avenue. Move to reject offer due to. Uh, lack of, uh, financial, uh, financial capacity to support the project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roles of vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Under our next heading, this is under the heading of donations, and at this time, we do not have any donations on this agenda. Our next category is under the heading of miscellaneous. Miscellaneous items are requested changes from the original through board decision. These may include a change of in, change, et cetera. Quest must go before the board's more considerations. Um, the first property, uh, that we have under this category, um, mish. So the first one we have, multiple properties listed in, uh, exhibit A. So it was, it's offered, being offered by Western LLC care of Tim, Tim J Dolan. And, uh, we move to counter the offer for twelve thousand dollars, uh, twelve-month option. With closing contingent upon approval of plan's budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Um, the last one is item number fifty-nine, we have an address, an address correction. There's an addition, sorry, yeah, we have an addition to our, uh. Parcels here, uh, we have an acquisition of a temporary destruction easement. Uh, property, this is item number fifty-nine, property address is twenty-five forty-three. Roth Graham Boulevard, move to accept, uh, the temporary construction easement. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved, I'm sorry, there's addition, I'm sorry, so there's nothing, okay, that's it. Looks like we have another agenda. Looks like we have another agenda. Again, six deals. The numbers. Second. This week. Just trying to get someone for this week, but I don't have the first of them, they'll be available until next week. All right, under our next uh property, so we're gonna complete fifty-nine again. I just wanna make sure that that's on the record. Uh we have person fifty-nine. Uh that property address is again uh fifty-five forty-three North Brand, it's temporary construction. Eastman is making on before that, you have a second. Twenty-five forty-three. So there are second.
Second.
So it's removed in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Uh we have another addendum to the property uh to uh and under this section, it's called fifty-nine A. Uh we have two property addresses, forty-four fifty-four Newstead Avenue and forty-four fifty Newstead uh Avenue. These subject properties are single-family residences. Mister Harris would like to rent rehab and rent and purchases of um straight sale. And we are going to, I'm looking at this and move to uh accept the induce on that. Yeah, yeah, all right. All right, so this was a little, this is a girl, okay. So we're gonna go ahead, they haven't been able to, yeah, right. All right, so we move to accept this offer of a thousand dollars for these two uh boxes. Let's go to a thousand dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is to vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number sixty. Item number sixty. Excellent. We're gonna give it in that, right, absolutely. So going back to fifty-nine, we have two addresses for the ten acquisition of a temporary construction easement that we want to make sure that we have covered. We thought that we had one in our last meeting, but uh we're going to read both of these addresses uh to make sure that we have both of them included. Uh presented by um Green Rivers Green Lake District. So we have twenty-five forty-three North Brand Boulevard and twenty-seven oh seven through oh nine North Brand Boulevard uh for a temporary construction easement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, what did I do? Okay, great, it's great. Yes, right, great. Okay. Sorry, I knew that too. No worries. Great Rivers Green Lake.
Second, second, second.
Hearing no objection of motion carries. Can I move on to sixty please? Our next category, these are items uh back for the commission under the heading of deferral. Um item number sixty, multiple addresses uh presented on Excel. Offer Alan K. Sales. Uh move to counter offer for fourteen thousand one hundred for a twelve month option with, I'm sorry. For yeah, twelve month option with closing contingent upon plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved inside. Remove the second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number sixty-one. Property address fifty-fifty Emerson Avenue. Move to defer any action on item uh sixty-one. Pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty-two, property address twenty-one sixteen Adelaide. Item sixty-two, property address twenty-one sixteen Adelaide, offer Tony G. Stubble. Move to accept offer of two thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number sixty-three. Offer Carly B. Carter, property addresses four two fifty-one Clay Avenue and fifty-three thirty-five Via Dozier. Move to accept offer of fifteen hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
They're moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number sixty-four. We have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer series of J acquisitions care of Delacy Robinson. Move to defer any action on these parcels pending any inputs for prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number sixty, property address nineteen fifteen De Soto. Uh care of our uh offer top quality homes, health, see care of Sierra Kent. Sierra Kent. All right, uh item number sixty-five nineteen fifteen De Soto. Uh the offer top quality homes LLC care of Sierra Brand. Uh move to uh accept offer uh five hundred dollars going to the appointing authority uh contingent upon budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Through the second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Um item number sixty-six. We have two property addresses uh presented offered by James G. Hudson, property addresses twenty-twoy-three Dresden, uh Dresden and thirty-seven twenty-five North Forte Street. Move to accept offer of three thousand hours with closing contingent on approval, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number sixty-seven, uh we have multiple properties listed in exhibit uh A there, uh move to uh counter offer for three thousand five hundred is a twenty-four month option with closing contingent on approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number sixty-eight, um property address twenty-oh-seven Mallard. Offer in habitat for may have care of Michael Bowles. Move to defer any action pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roles of vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number sixteen-nine, um property addresses are listed in exhibit A. Offer forty-nine forty-nine Development Company LLC care of Robbie Montgomery. Move to accept offer of thirty-six thousand five hundred for a twenty-four month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number seventeen, property address thirty-eight twenty-sixth Page Avenue. Offer Latanya Ford, move to accept offer for five hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Well, second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Uh offers. Okay, um next on our agenda, we have resolutions. You and if you're really not kind of our different state to present the resolution.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Brown and Attorney Arnold. And good afternoon and good afternoon to the attendees. Uh the first resolution that you'd like to meet here is resolution number four dash L R A dash one zero four. It is the resolution which essentially authorized L R A to continue their contract with where the cell being in friction as we refer to as the work program. Uh and that program essentially was produced in context has been in effect already. Uh that program is where communities development administration actually funds one point seven seven million dollars to L R A for the purpose of providing both salaries uh and also board ops and other work associated with personnel equipment and supplies uh to essentially operate and maintain properties that are in L R A. And so this resolution simply put authorizes us to continue that agreement through twenty-twenty-four and to receive that funding and supply it to awards personnel for maintenance as well as the equipment that's necessary to operate the city to maintenance. So with that, I would like to make a recommendation to the uh L R A Commission to approve resolution number change four dash L R A dash.
With the information presented, Commissioner Arnold, I move that uh we accept resolution number twenty-four L R A one oh two.
A second then.
It's removed in second, uh to call for the vote. Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Yes. We do second, through an objection which carries. Uh our next resolution, direction, she explained with her voice.
Yes, yes, thank you, Commissioner Brown. Uh the next resolution, I would actually like to call forward uh Mike Ziegler. Mike Ziegler is the new Green City Coalition Director. Uh Mike has actually been brought as a part of staff with L R A to support and with the Green City Coalition activities. And to get some context into what Green City Coalition is, uh there is a agreement that L R A S O D C has uh with several agencies that actually funds Green City initiatives with regards to L R A actually maintaining properties that are either L R A beautification or community garden spaces or green spaces that we operate. Uh and so this resolution number twenty-four L R A dash one oh five encompasses supporting some of the activities that are related to maintaining specific green spaces that are related to gardens. So I will now yield to Mike to further explain uh the funding source as well as what this L R A resolution will allow us to make sure and doing so to support the Green City Coalition.
Um how long Mike can shelter, thank you, save us all some time by uh anticipating some of the things I was about to say, but basically this resolution authorizes L R A to execute sole source procurement for two contracts for lawn maintenance and debris removal um in the College Hill and Walnut Park East neighborhoods. Um and those are sites that have historically been managed by the Green City Coalition. Uh these contracts will be less than ten thousand dollars each. I'm gonna use our above beautification funds. Um we're seeking sole source, sole source procurement for these sites um because they're higher profile sites and they require a high frequency of visits and unique servicing. Um the two vendors have been identified in the resolution of a history of working these sites over the past four years. Um can handle the high uh frequency of visits and either live or work very close to the sites. Um so I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Uh with the information we've been presented, we move that we uh accept resolution number twenty-four L R A one oh five. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Just keep on.
The last question.
Last question, please.
Uh so resolution number twenty-four dash L R A dash one zero six is a resolution that would authorize the agreement of forest construction. What we're and that is simply to move forward with construction services. That's six one one Dr. Ryan, just to give context, uh that address is actually the site of the Wilson Loop and formerly what we know as formerly known as Plus Two Burgers uh in Wilson. And so this resolution would allow L R A to move forward with securing forest construction as a part of the primary projects uh that have been identified and supported by S A D C. Uh the work that will be performed specifically is to do construction regularly safely and also cleaning the site. And that is the first phase of simply allowing us to mobilize those services which will be the first phase of actually doing segmentation project. Um so this is more so funding for the contractors, actually perform those investigation to the site services. And the restructuring services investigations and determine what would be necessary for a thorough segmentation project. The contract is going to not exceed seven thousand hours. Uh and again, that is a part of L R A and S O D C's investment in preserving the similar sites and landmarks uh that are significant and that L R A has in terms of administration. So with that, I make the right conditions and prepare to move forward with the resolution. So with that, I make the recommendation to move forward with resolution number twenty-four dash L R A dash six. And then still, so the contract would actually be a page and a bit. There is a process that after it appears to be a precision, you have to go through actual contract execution phase. So we envision that. Getting through that process and.
Well, with the information you sent in, the mission here in front of us. I move to accept resolution number twenty-four L R A one oh six. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries.
Well, thank all those that did come, those that anticipated. Our next L R A meeting will be June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Meeting is adjourned.